We are now back in session. It's not a -- I'll just call on you if you have your light on, and you have your light on so you can speak. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Constance Williams for her performance.
Madam President, may I -- I was going to -- I think if we do Rule 12, motion to adjourn, we wouldn't be able to pick it up tomorrow morning. But I'd like to make a recommendation or a motion to recess and continue the conversation tomorrow morning.
No.
Judge Chul. Is anyone seconding that motion?
No.
Okay. Do you have a motion to -- is it a motion to recess?
To recess. Yes, Madam.
It's -- On a recess, it's -- just got clarification for recess. I can grant the recess, and I'm not granting that at the moment. And if we do grant a recess, it will not be for tomorrow. It will be a recess, and then I will call us back as I've been doing.
Madam President, may I invoke Rule 6? The recess, the time we're able to take a recess between these dockets is 20 minutes, and we've been consistently over than that.
Thank you. I understand your concern, Councilwoman Flynn. This has been a complicated process, and there are some recesses that have been longer than 20 minutes. As this is my second term, I also know that during my first term, when we were debating budget, there were also recesses that were longer than 20 minutes. The rules do state and do stipulate for recesses longer than 20 minutes. And if the request is for me, when we go into another recess, should we go into another recess, that it be declared at a time certain, I will do so, if that is your request. And then we will come back, and then if we need to recess immediately thereafter, we will do that.
Finally, thank you, Madam Chair.
You are most welcome.
And finally, I do think that during these recesses, there are open meeting violations that I've noticed, and I'm concerned about that. And I don't think that's -- that this is the avenue for us to be debating while we're not in the council chamber. But there's a lot of negotiations going on behind the scenes, and I am concerned about open meeting law violations, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I understand that concern. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Mahir. Councilwoman Mahir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And as much as I would like to be home with my daughter, I would rather be here finishing my job. So I will object to anything that is trying to stop us from doing our jobs. And I do appreciate the President and her leadership during this process. And I also want to thank the chair because it's different in terms of what's happening here. Like, this is unprecedented. It's like gonna be 12 o'clock, and we're still here debating. So let's finish our job, let's keep with the process, and let's stop -- let's stop being children. Let's do the work and have the political courage to take these votes, and that's it.
Thank you. And as for me, I will just say that during recesses, I try my best to rest my feet. And, you know, because I've been standing up here. So not sure what others, what else is happening. But I want to turn it over to the chair of Ways and Means, Councilor -- oh, but no, we're talking -- So not sure what, what others, what else is happening, but I want to turn it over to the Chair of Ways and Means, Counselor O'Raugh. Oh, but, no, we're talking.
Okay, the chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh, Counselor O'Raugh.
Counselor O'Raugh, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'd like to move to make a substitution for the current partial override that's in front of us, it's now in front of you. The difference in this, we're now pulling from Office of Human Services, Current Charges, Treasury Department, Personal Services, Central Fleet Management, Contractual Services, Office of Storage Preservation, Contractual Services, and Property and Management Department, Contractual Services, in the total amount of $300,000. That is the amendment that's now in front of us.
Thank you, Counselor O'Raugh. So this is, you have a motion to substitute.
Yes.
Did I hear a second? It's been seconded, okay, and now it's, the substitution is before us. Would anyone else like to speak on this, on this partial override? No, okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote? Wait, before you do that, does anyone have any questions on what we're voting on? Is everyone clear? Counselor Weber has a question, I want to make sure all questions are answered prior to us taking a vote. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Yes, sorry, I'm just, I'm confused, are we voting on the partial override or the motion to substitute?
The, the motion to substitute was seconded, we don't need a, a roll call vote on that one. Just, now this is a roll call vote on the substantive on the actual partial override.
Okay, and this is for, I, I don't think the Chair, just in case, this is for ESOL, the thing we were talking about before the recess.
Exactly. Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Great. Mr. Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Partial override, 1P. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
No.
Counselor Durkin, no, bless you. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
No.
Counselor Flynn, no. Counselor Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Zinn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
C.
Counselor Mejia, C. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes, and Counselor O'Raugh.
Yes.
Counselor O'Raugh, yes. Partial override receives 11 votes in the affirmative and 2 votes in the negative. Passes.
Thank you. Okay, the Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh, Counselor O'Raugh, you have the floor.
I'm now presenting an additional partial override. This is for the increase of Office of Blackmail Advancement, Contractual Services for $250,000 for blackmail equity study. This is coming from the Transportation Department Equipment, $100,000. Office of Budget Management Personnel Services, $150,000. Blackmail Advancement does amazing work in the city of Boston. They're looking to do an equity study to understand the, the disparities that exist with black men here in the city of Boston. This equity study will take place across a two-year period, but just to make sure that we have the baseline, to make sure that we are directing investments, programs, to help black men, black and brown men here in the city of Boston achieve or thrive in the city of Boston. So just looking forward to passing this, Frank Farrow, the Executive Director, we heard from Tito Jackson yesterday, and the whole Blackmail Commission, they do amazing work. So this will be great, great funding for them in order to understand the, the baseline and where black men need the investments and support. Thank you.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I've said this before in different occasions, but I was raised by six black men, I am a mother of two black boys, I am married to a black man, I was a foster parent to 17 black boys. There is no way that I can get up here and advocate for black men more than black men here in this, in this council, and I understand that. However, as, as, as a black woman who is invested and connected and understand that our black men and boys are deeply disinvested or marginalized, I rise in full support, and I hope that I don't have to get up again to talk about the data, to talk about why this is crucial. They're asking for a study that would lead to comprehensively execute their work based on practical analysis, as opposed to just saying that this is what, that this is, this is just what we want to do. So basing it on studies that already exist, pulling data from the different analyses that already exist, and being able to properly create the rubrics that we always ask them for, we always, we're always asking for reports, but how do they do this job? How do they do the report that we asked them to report on, on an annual basis without proper benchmarks or standards that they follow? So I hope that my colleagues, this is not one that, again, we have to explain and humanize black men and boys and talk about why they deserve this study, and I thank you in advance for your support and vote on this. And Counselor, Chair O'Raugh, thank you so much for putting this forward on the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, the Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, could I ask Counselor O'Raugh a question as it relates to, on the Transportation Department Equipment, the $100,000?
Do the Chair, you may, yes.
Counselor O'Raugh, on the Transportation Department Equipment, $100,000, do you have an idea of what type of equipment that would impact the Transportation Department?
Do the Chair, Counselor O'Raugh, if you'd like to answer that question, you may.
What we took a look at, Counselor Flynn, and you was there, we were taking a look at the underspent money in those accounts. What equipment exactly it would impact, I'm not 100% sure, but over the years, we have seen underspending inside of this line item, and that's why we're pulling from this line item $100,000.
Thank you, I, I also have a question, and this is for you and for your staff. Counselor Flynn, I'll allow you to speak, I saw you were rising if you have additional questions, but it'd be also useful, I know we had working sessions, but sometimes there are special helps, if, do we have the average underspending? Yeah, that would be helpful, okay. Counselor Flynn, is there anything else you would like to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm gonna, I'm supporting this proposal, and the reason I, I'm supporting it for, for many reasons, but I, I do know that I have gone with Counselor O'Raugh many times to the monthly meetings that, that they had, that, that's ongoing, and I, I've seen firsthand the excellent work this commission is doing. I'm in support of this proposal.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Counselor O'Raugh for bringing this to the floor, it's no surprise that I was the one who worked on establishing that commission alongside a lot of black men who were fighting for a study even back then when we first initially got started. So I think this is gonna give them the opportunity and the tools that they need to really be able to move that work forward. So I am enthusiastically supporting this particular amendment, and I just want to give a shout out to Frank and his whole entire team and the work that they've been doing. Our office has been auditing four pieces of legislation, the blackmail advancement being one, and the work that we've done with that office to just make sure that what we proposed to do when we first established the ordinance is actually meeting the moment. And in doing so, we have spoken with and interviewed men who have been recipients of that work, and so we want to make sure that we are able to support them. So looking forward to another no-brainer here.
Thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay. Mr. Clerk, could we please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on partial override, 1N. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
No.
Counselor Fitzgerald, no. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Zinn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes, and Counselor O'Raugh.
Yes.
Counselor O'Raugh, yes. This partial override receives 12 votes in the affirmative and 1 vote in the negative. Override passes.
Thank you, this override has passed. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh? Okay. I'll give you that one minute. Oh, okay, the Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh, Counselor O'Raugh, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm now presenting an additional partial override. I'm recommending that we override the following increases. Increase Finance Commission Personnel Services, $150,000 for increased capacity. Increase Financial Commission Contractual Services for $400,000 for increased capacity. This will be coming from Office of Human Resources, Current Charges and Obligations.
Thank you.
And Mayor's Office of Housing Contractual Services.
Okay. This is, this is a new partial override, so no, we're not voting on any more, okay, great, okay, wanted to confirm. Okay, would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Brayden, Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, the Boston Finance Commission is one of the lesser-known commissions in the city of Boston, the FinCom. It's an independent watchdog agency. The members are nominated, the members of the board are nominated by the governor. It's a bit, it functions a bit like OCPF, it's an independent watchdog that oversees, the purpose of the, is to ensure that taxpayers, residents, business owners and employees of the city of Boston have an advocate for honest and transparent government operations in the city. This is a good government issue, and as I said earlier, the Millennium Tower is built on the site of a former city-owned garage. BPDA had valued the garage between 25 to 40 million, and when the FinCom Commission looked into it, they said, you know, the land is worth a lot more in terms of development potential, and they had it revalued, and when it was sold, it sold for somewhere in the region of 120 million. And that's just sort of one of the, one of the many, the many instance issues that they look into. They look into contracts, they make sure that, especially no-bid contracts, they make sure that everything is conducted in the appropriate way, and actually, they save our city millions and millions and millions of dollars every year. They have, right now, they have three staff, they have a budget of 30, 340 million dollars, no, 340,000 dollars, sorry, that would be great if they had that much money, 340,000 dollars. And in the, in this moment, when we don't have an inspector general in the city of Boston, this is, this is the one agency that doesn't overlook the appropriateness of contracts and makes sure that all of our, it's fiscal stewardship, they're ensuring that our money is well-spent and not wasted. So again, we're also concerned about how we spend our money and not to waste any money, and this is where we can, we can really put our money where our mouth is in supporting this, the Boston Finance Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh. Oh, now I reckon, now the Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh.
Well, I'd like to move to substitute this package with an additional, with another package.
Okay, is that, is that motion seconded? Seconded, okay.
Right, this is 1Q.
This is 1Q, so you're giving us a new 1Q?
Yes.
Which is what Counselor Brayden just spoke on.
Right, so this now is gonna include a few more items in it. It's gonna include workforce development, youth homework help in the amount of $150,000. Increase Mayor's Office of Housing, Housing vouchers for $1 million. Youth employment, for youth jobs, $270,000. The Finance Commission for the $150,000 and $40,000. College readiness in the amount of $500,000, and then increase for BCYF supplies and materials for taller play and programming at BCYF centers, all coming from executions of court in the amount of 2.15, 2, 2, 2, $2,150,000.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, will we be getting that?
We need the substitution.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, they're working on it now.
Okay. Do you know, do you have an idea of how long it will take for us to get?
It should be coming out right now.
Right.
I could give the clerk a copy.
Thank you. Okay, does everyone have a copy, a new copy in front of them? Yep, okay, great. Counselor O'Raugh, are you, is there anything that you'd like to add? Counselor O'Raugh, the Chair recognizes Counselor O'Raugh, you have the floor.
I would say this has a lot of the stuff that, you know, we've had in the original package, the city housing vouchers, we heard people come and testify last night around how, how big of an impact the city housing vouchers have on their lives, through the young gentleman or gentleman Domingo Sintron who talked about.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, there he goes, right there.
Still here.
Speaking on.
Domingo.
Yes, spoke about how it was a lifeline for him. We also have the youth jobs, we have, you know, people still in the crowd, you know, when we spoke with, I had a hearing with YEO, Y E, can't remember which Y O U, but we heard about the amount of young people that don't get a job. We're just trying to give them more support so they can offer more jobs, not just for the summer, but also year-round. We heard from Counselor Brayden on the Finance Commission, and then the college readiness. Right now, we don't really fund college readiness as a city, I think it needs to be a line item, just speaking on the impact that it has in my life. I know there's great programs out there like Northeast Balfour Academy, Posse, just making sure that we're helping support those programs, knowing that sometimes, you know, our, our communities don't have the money to pay for a tutor, right? They don't have the money to pay for SAT prep, so just making sure that we're helping our community to get that assistance and prep, I think is very important. And then lastly, we all, a lot of us are fathers or moms and have young ones, little toddlers, so just making sure that we get additional money for taller play program, which I currently don't have in my district, but I think is something that is very much needed.
Thank you, Counselor O'Raugh, and thank you for offering this package. I worked at Posse, and my sister's a Posse scholar, so definitely know how important college readiness is, and Domingo, I actually can't believe that you're still here, much as glasses, thank you for still being here, for your advocacy, and for your really, really incredibly moving testimony. I know it's late for us, has to be late for, for all those who are here in your own advocacy, so I really, I appreciate it deeply. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? No? Okay. Any questions? Oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
See, I don't know if this is the finish line, but this sure feels like it could be. This is an opportunity for us to, I mean, I think that my colleague from District Nine said it best. I feel like we are literally trying to do the best that we can to get the little bit of what we've been fighting for. And I just want to thank Counsel Worrell, Shane and Karishma for all of their hard work, because every single time that we get to here, they have to go back and rearrange and try to get to a good place. So it is not easy, and I think that this is not a lot. And I think this could be an easy vote for many of us to take, because the things that we are asking for is far more moderate than where we started at 2:30 this afternoon. So I think we keep making it easier for people to say, you know, to deny us. So hopefully, we can get to the finish line.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Does anyone have any clarifying questions or comments? Or before we move to a vote on this? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Through the Chair, is it possible to know how much has come from the execution of court special appropriation so far? Is it $500,000 or is it, it's $850,000?
What? Okay, you have asked a question, and I would want the answer on the record. Counsel Worrell, if through the Chair... Okay, so we will hold, and hopefully, we'll be able to get a quick answer. If not, we'll go into a brief recess. But we'll get that answer. Okay. He has confirmed, Central Staff has confirmed that so far, $850,000 has been reallocated from execution of courts, special appropriation. Good. Any additional questions? Any clarification? Any other comments? Anyone else want to speak on this matter before we move to a vote? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on partial override, 1Q. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin?
No.
Counsel Durkin, no. Counsel Fernandez-Andison?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Andison, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
No.
Counsel Fitzgerald, no. Counsel Flynn?
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louzhen?
Yes.
Counsel Louzhen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe?
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. 10 votes in the affirmative and 3 votes in the negative. Override passes.
Thank you. Domingo, I see you. We see you. What? We have, I'm turning to Counsel Worrell, and he's throwing in the towel. I have another five hours, y'all, in me. I'm good to go. Counsel Worrell? We will, just to confirm that there are no additional overrides, we are in a brief recess. If it's more than a 20-minute recess, I'll call us back, and if we need more time, we'll go into another recess. We are in a recess. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to acknowledge that we're over the 20-minute mark. Are we able to consider a recess for tomorrow?
I will not be doing a recess for tomorrow, but I apologize. I do. I sincerely apologize that we were over the 20-minute recess mark. I apologize to my colleagues, to everyone who's here. Thanks for sticking it out. It's a long process. It's also our job. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
I'd like to introduce a partial override for place-making. Majority of this money is coming from, it's interdepartmental. It's going from Mayor's Office of Contractual Services to Mayor's Office of Housing Supplies and Materials. We're pulling $100,000 from Contractual Services and then, yes, $100,000. That's the new one. We're going to stick with the $200,000 then. Auditing Department Personnel Services, $50,000. Office of Labor Relations Personnel Services, $50,000. That's the $200,000.
Oh, okay, so we have to print something new?
No, no, we have it. Everyone has it.
Okay, everyone has it. I don't actually have it. I'd like it.
1R.
1R?
The one with $200,000. Probably got two. The one for $200,000.
So, okay, okay, let's re-center. Okay. This is a 1R partial override. It is $200,000. Is there anything additional you would like to say, Counsel Worrell, on this?
Majority of it is interdepartmental, going from Mayor's Office of Housing Contractual Services to Mayor's Office of Housing Supplies and Materials. So majority of it is interdepartmental.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of order. I'm just reading this document. And the document I have, it's an increase of the Mayor's Office of Housing, $100,000 and another, adding another $100,000. And then the bottom to the balance, increase overrides, recommend the following decrease, $100,000. So is there supposed to be another $100,000 that should be noted in there?
Central Staff, can you just make sure that everyone has the same document? Because I looked at Counsel Flynn's document and mine, it's different. I know that's a lot of things moving around. But Counsel Flynn, that docket, the document you have before you does not appear to be the correct one. I don't know if Counsel Fitzgerald has the correct one. I'm happy to give you my copy after this. I'm going to just put us into a brief recess until we have the right documents. Back in session. Just want to confirm that everyone has the same document in front of them. It says 1R partial override of Counsel Brian Worrell. Docket number 0990 partially overridden as move shall be partially overridden as follows. Increase Mayor's Office of Housing, $200,000. And then to the balance, these increases, Mayor's Office of Housing Contractual Services, $100,000. Office of Labor Relations Personnel Services, $50,000. And Auditing Department Personnel Services, $50,000. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
I make a move to withdraw the partial override.
Okay. You could just withdraw it. So you are withdrawing this partial override? Okay. He's withdrawn the override, so the partial override. Okay. So are there any additional partial overrides or anything to consider? No additional? Okay. Thank you to all of my colleagues. Thank you to the Chair. Chair, do you have any other final? You're good? Okay. Docket number 0990 has been overridden in part. This constitutes the approval of the FY '25 city budget. Thank you to all of my colleagues for their work and their diligence. Thank you to the incomparable Chair of Ways and Means, Counsel Brian Worrell. Of course, to our Central Staff and to the Clerk, Assistant Clerk and the Sonographer. I know it's late. It's 11:51. We still have a bit more to do, and I just want to thank you all for hanging in. I don't think any of us could have predicted that it would be 11:51 and we'd still be here, but we are, and that's the work. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders? Oh, yeah, okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the personnel orders?
Personnel orders, docket number 1065, Counsel Louzhen for Counsel Santana. And docket number 1066, Counsel Louzhen for Counselor Mejia.
The Chair moves to passage of dockets number 1065 and 1066. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you, the personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata and then Counselor Pepe. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Would you believe it if I said this came up fast?
I can do it. We could go into recess if you need.
No. This is about... Please, God, no. Zero Dale Street. This is...
Is it docket number 0868?
Docket 0868.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency and Parks. Docket number 0868. Message in order for approval and order authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the City of Boston to acquire by eminent domain taking a parcel at Zero Dale Street in Hyde Park adjacent to the Sharon Woods Urban Wild as permanently protected parkland to be managed in coordination with Sharon Woods and to use community preservation fund monies appropriated to the Parks and Recreation Department to award damages as determined by the commission.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel... Wait. Okay. The Chair is seeking to pull it from the green sheets. Absent objection, the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Everybody should have gotten this memo that's been provided by the Parks and Recreation Department, specifically Kathy Baker Eclipse, who is an incredible city worker here in the city of Boston. This is about the Sharon Woods addition and the Sharon Woods Urban Wild, which is not in my district, although I have been told that there has been significant community support for the acquisition of this parcel. And typically, when you hear eminent domain, ooh, what is that? Immediately, that was my reaction. And then coming to realize and see the level of advocacy, we had somebody here last week who we honored, and I think Counsel Pepe can speak to this a little bit more eloquently than I can, but who have spent months and maybe years trying to acquire this property. So this is a win for the community. And from what I've seen and all of the research and from this memo of the city of Boston, I am comfortable with moving forward and voting yes for this, and I encourage my colleagues to do so. But I want to pass it over to my colleague, Counsel Pepe, through the Chair, if that's okay, if he can speak to it a little bit further. Thank you.
Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata, for bringing this to the floor today. Yes, the Sharon Woods, or aka Dale Street, is a parcel of land that is very important to the community. As you mentioned, eminent domain is a scary word, but this is something where the owner has actually had a lot of conversation with the community, and he understands the value of his land, which is why he's willing to, he has worked together with the community to make this happen. And I've got nothing but amazing words about this project, so I ask my colleagues to vote in support of this.
Thank you. And I just want to uplift all the community advocates who've been working on this project. They took me and a number of elected officials out to see it last year, and instantly, by stepping on it, I knew that it's something that merited preservation. It doesn't merit anything else. When people talk about the trade-offs between housing and green space, there are some places where you know it should be green space, and Zero Dale Street is one of them. And so I'm very happy to finally see this happening and grateful for the advocates of Sharon Woods. Counsel Coletta Zapata seeks acceptance and passage of docket number 06...
0868.
0868. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull docket number 0746, which is coming from the City Services and Innovation Technology Committee on page nine of the green sheets. Any to be voted on today?
One moment. I want to make sure we all have the docket in front of us. So it's 0746?
Yes.
Okay.
Page nine.
Page nine. And the Clerk needs to read it into the record, so Mr. Clerk?
From the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, docket number 0746. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3 million in the form of a grant, the multilingual digital experience grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Administration and Finance to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the development of programs and services that improve the experience of digital government services for multilingual communities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Absent... Absent objection from any of my colleagues. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Pepe, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Clerk stated, this grant is of $3 million refund of development of programs and services that improve the experience of digital government services for multilingual communities. The Department of Innovation and Technology plans to build a multimodal bilingual, multilingual communication system that enables effective two-way communication between Boston City's government and its constituents. This system will ensure that critical information reaches all residents regardless of their language and provides a platform for city officials to hear and respond to their voices. This is very important for the entire city, just because we are a very diverse city with many languages that are spoken, and I just, I really believe that this is something we should pass, and it has to be passed today, if not, it will expire. So I ask my colleagues to please support this.
Thank you. Counsel Pepe seeks... Counselor Pepe seeks passage of docket number... Whenever I flip, I get... 0746. Counselor Pepe seeks passage of docket number 0746. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Are there any more pulls from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Morrell. Counsel Morrell, you have the floor.
I will thank you, Madam President. I'd like to poll dockets numbers 0676 through 0678 from page two on the green sheets.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those dockets into the record?
From the Committee on Ways and Means. Docket number 0676. Message in order for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $184,780,000 for various capital improvement purposes for city departments, including the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, Boston Housing Authority, Boston Planning and Development Agency, Boston Public Library, Environment, Fire, Mayor's Office of Housing, Office of Arts and Culture, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property Management, Public Works, and the Transportation Departments. Docket number 0677. Message in order authorizing an appropriation order in the amount of $240 million, $243,75,000 for various capital improvement purposes for the Boston Public Schools. Docket number 0678. Message in order for your approval and order authorizing the City of Boston to enter into one or more lease purchase or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2025 in the amount not to exceed $40 million. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles and trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunications equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, street lighting installation, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing.
Absent objection, the motion of the Committee... Absent objection, the motion of the Committee Chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm asking my colleagues for a second vote in the affirmative today on all the capital projects. As you know, loan orders require two votes by the City Council, a minimum of two weeks apart. The first vote was on June 5th, so just looking for a second vote on our capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I know it's really late, and I wished it was a little earlier. We've been... We are taking a second of two required votes to authorize the City of Boston to incur billions of dollars in debt for capital projects. The gravity of this vote is underscored by the fact that unlike other budget and appropriation orders, the city charter requires two separate two-thirds votes. Despite the Council's sweeping approval of top-line dollar amounts, the absence of accountability mechanisms is glaring. This lack of oversight leaves the door open for misuse of funds, which is why I will again vote no. My no vote today is a result of two factors. Persistent lack of capital investment in Alston Brighton and extremely troubling absence of accountability in our capital process. Both of these flaws are much bigger than any one mayor or administration. They've persisted for decades. However, by failing to address these issues, we compound the problem and do grave disservice to our city's future. Since taking office in 2020, I have gone through, this is my fifth budget cycle, learning how the capital budget process works. Five years ago, I had questions about how existing projects advance year to year, but they remain unanswered. It's clear to me now that serious flaws undergrid the entire capital improvement process in the City of Boston. I want to draw attention to what we vote on and from how it's... and the form of how it's constructed. Dockets 0676 and 0677 are loan orders authorizing debt to be incurred and appropriation funds for capital improvements for the city departments and Boston Public Schools. Docket 0676 authorizes over $180 million for city departments with an appendix listing 48 items ranging from specific to broad purposes. But the vote itself has no breakdown of the dollar allocations across those 48 projects. So even though the name of the project's there, we have no idea how much it's going to cost or when it might ever be started, completed, et cetera. The docket 0677 authorizes over $240 million for BPS with an appendix listing 13 items ranging again from specific to broad purposes, like long-term facilities improvements or simply white stadium. Again, no breakdown of the $240 million among the projects. This begs the question, do councilors know what we're voting on? While we may be proud of our AAA bond rating, which we've earned for timely payment of our debts, perhaps our creditors should instead ask, is the City of Boston making sound decisions for capital improvements? What internal controls exist to ensure that the billions we are incurring in debt are being spent in a timely and efficient manner? Year after year, Alston Brighton ranks dead last in capital improvements despite being the city's second-largest neighborhood in both population and land area. This year is no different. In this budget, the total amount proposed capital spending slated for our district is $49 million, a staggering $192 million less than the average of the other eight districts. That $49 million also includes projects, one project, the Family Justice Center, which is not in my district, it's in District Eight, and another project that is already completed and shouldn't even be on the list. Seven districts each receive four times as much funding as Alston Brighton. Put simply, Alston Brighton is not being treated fairly. It doesn't have to be this way. I appreciate that the current administration has inherited these problems. They have existed for decades. However, by failing to take decisive action to improve capital budgeting practice in Boston, we are recreating the mistakes of past administrations. It is unconscionable that there are still no guardrails in place for multi-billion-dollar capital projects budgets such as this one. I cannot vote in good conscience to authorize the city to take on billions in new debt that I am deeply unsure of, while I am deeply unsure of our ability to equitably prioritize and allocate the existing authorizations. It would be irresponsible to continue operating this way without substantive checks on the capital planning process and a kind of common sense initiatives that exists in other cities, even here in Massachusetts. It is absurd that the City Council has spent the last 10 hours debating $15 million in operating budget, overriding amendments only to rubber stamp a $4 billion, five-year capital budget with insufficient unspecified spending plans and an afterthought without any real scrutiny. This week, last week, we had a heat emergency in Alston Brighton. All across the city, we had heat emergency, the first of the season. And the city posted cooling centers, all the BCYF centers all across the city. And when our constituents looked at the list, there was not one cooling center in Alston Brighton. We have a population of nearly 80,000 residents, and we did not have one cooling center. What does that say? It just proves my point. Our public works yard and the building for staff is falling down. I've just been reminded that by Tiger... My Tiger in is earlier. We have to beg, steal, and borrow space. We're getting a new EMS center in a building, in a lab building, because Harvard displaced, decided to develop the land, and they needed to build. We had a... We have to go beg, steal, and borrow facilities in Alston Brighton. And we have projects that have been in the works for 10 years and longer. I'm deeply disturbed and very unhappy with how capital planning happens. And I talked to my predecessors in this position and folks, longtime residents in Alston Brighton, they say this is the way it's been for decades. And I would like to see, when we get through this process, I will be filing a hearing order on the whole process of capital planning in the city and capital budgeting. Other cities like DC, as a sort of gold standard, they have a public-facing dashboard where residents can go and look at the project that's proposed, the details of what the project is, how much has been spent, and then the progress of that project from start to finish over a five-year period, as long as it takes. We have so much more to do in this space. I know it's really late. This is my piece. I will be voting no on the capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. And it's important, there's a lot of truths in what you said, and it's important for, you know, for you to share that. And so, oh, you have one, an additional thing. All right. Go ahead.
I have additional comment. When I voted no two weeks ago, I was approached by folks from IGR who said that, what was my problem that we were getting the I-90 project? The I-90 project is a federal highway project. It's going to be 10 years of pain and inconvenience. It's a bit like saying to Ed Flynn, "What's your problem, Ed? You're getting the big dig." We... The I-90 project, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. So when I raise issues about city investment in Alston Brighton, they say, "What's your problem? You're getting the I-90." The I-90 is a federal highway project. And I really resent that. It's incredibly disrespectful of our neighborhood. And when we raise issues, to be pammed off with that, that's not what we should be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
I know it's late. Thank you, Madam President, but...
No need to preface it with that. Just say what you got to say. Because everyone, if you put your mic on, you want to speak. We're in a meeting. You can speak. You have the floor.
Thank you. Now that I've got the floor, and I don't know what to do with it. I just wanted to rise. And I know that the last time we went through this, everybody said, "Well, why didn't she speak earlier?" Blah, blah, blah. Because I think that we should actually put the capital budget up for a vote sooner so that we can actually have more time to deliberate, right? So I think that doing it in the way that we did really prevented us from having real conversations. And I also think that the capital budget, for those folks who, or at least from what I've learned, even though I'm not a district counselor, I have heard, I don't know if this is true or not, I can't confirm nor deny this, but that oftentimes, that the capital budget, like sometimes you may not get things that you want in operating budget, but you get those things in the capital budget, and then people end up happy. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know. But I'm just saying that, in your case, Counsel, you did not get anything in any kind of budget, so I'm feeling really bad for you today. But I will be voting no and standing in support of my colleague, Counsel Braden, on this one.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote on docket 0676. Will we take them separately, or...
Separate.
Okay. We will take three separate, and let's just do roll call votes on dockets... First docket number 0676.
Roll call vote on docket number 0676. Second reading. Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, no. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louzien?
Yes.
Counsel Louzien, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy? Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe?
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Morrell?
Yes.
Counsel Morrell, yes. Docket number 0676 has received its second reading and has received 12 votes in the affirmative and one negative.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number 0677?
Counsel Braden?
No.
Counsel Braden, no. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louzien?
Yes.
Counsel Louzien, yes. Counsel Mejia?
No.
Counsel Mejia, no. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe?
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Morrell?
Yes.
Counsel Morrell, yes. Docket number 0677 has received its second reading and has received 11 votes in the affirmative and two votes in the negative.
Thank you. Docket number 0677 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please do a... Conduct a roll call vote for docket number 0678.
Counsel Braden?
No.
Counsel Braden, no. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louzien?
Yes.
Counsel Louzien, yes. Counsel Mejia?
No.
Counsel Mejia, no. Counsel Murphy? Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe?
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Morrell?
Yes.
Counsel Morrell, yes. Docket number 0678 has received its second reading, has received 11 votes in the affirmative and two in the negative.
Thank you. These dockets have passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay, we are now on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are...
Twelve.
Twelve late-file matters.
Nine personnel...
Nine personnel orders, one letter from the mayor...
Two 17.
And two 17F responses. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All of those in favor of adding the late-file matters, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late map. Please read the personnel order late-file matters into the record.
First personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Murphy. You want me to read all of them?
Just read all the personnel.
Second late-file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Mejia. Third, late-file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Mejia. Fourth late-file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Mejia. Fifth filed, late-file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Sixth, late-file order, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Seventh late-file order, personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Pepe. Eighth, late-file personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Pepe. And ninth late-file personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Braden.
The Chair moves to passage of these late-file matters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These personnel orders have been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the...
Letter.
Letter into the record.
Letter from Mayor Michelle Wu. Dear Mr. Clerk, pursuant to the authority vested in me by City of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 5, -5, -10, I hereby appoint Brian Swett of Six Dartmouth Place as Chief Climate Officer overseeing the Environment, Energy, and Open Space Cabinet effective June 10, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you. That communication will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the 17F responses into the record?
17F response from the mayor's office, dear councilors, this is a response to the 17F order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to legal spending. And the second response, dear councilors, this is a response to a 17F order relative to school athletics and transportation data.
Thank you. The chair moves to passage of these late file matters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These have been added to the record, and these have been placed, they're placed on file. Okay. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are, that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Councilor Mejia, is there a question?
That was a question. It's about a vote. I just want to make sure that my vote was recorded correctly for docket 0676, that I voted no.
Mr. Clerk, can you please confirm how?
I'll have to go through all the late files now.
I just want to make sure.
What number?
I'm not supporting the capital budget, so I want to make sure that my vote is recorded in as...
Which number?
It's a docket number, one, zero, is it docket number 0676?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you please inform her of the...
You voted yes.
I, well, then, I do not support that capital budget. So can you update that, please?
So would you like a motion, a motion to reconsider your vote?
Yes.
Is that seconded?
Yes.
Madam President.
Okay. On docket number 0676?
676, yes.
Councilor Mejia, no.
Well, we have to...
I just, I thought it was...
Yeah, we have to, it has to be a motion to reconsider.
I don't want to support the capital budget.
Yeah, so, okay. So motion to reconsider requires a simple majority. Councilor Mejia wishes to change her vote on docket number 0676. That motion to allow her to, the motion for reconsideration to, for her to change her vote. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Luizhen?
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mejia?
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin?
President.
Council Peppin, president. Council Santana?
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber?
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Reconsideration has prevailed.
Thank you. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor. You would like to change your vote?
Yes, I want all the votes for the capital to say no, so...
They do.
All of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've dealt with that consent agenda. We are now, we are now moving on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. I'd like to do some birthday shout-outs. Well, technically, the birthday was yesterday.[954.56][954.56](Laughter). Surprise, surprise, it's 12:21. But we have two birthday people in the house, who were in the house. Bruce Brzeysman, shout-out to Bruce. Today's his birthday, and he's been working overtime, overdrive. Bruce, if you are, if you are here, we are shouting you out. I know you've done yeoman's work on this budget along with your, with your councilor, so happy birthday. It's also the birthday of Charlie Levin, yesterday, today, whatever. And July 2nd, we have Aaron Hamilton Grenham, who will no longer be with us because the 30th is his last day, but we still wish you a happy birthday.[993.43][993.43](Applause). Elaine Dunnevin is on the 3rd. Indis Johnson is on the 3rd. Shane Pack, 7th. So happy birthday to everyone. Also, shout-out to our very own Lorraine, who is a Shattuck Award recipient. So shout-out to Lorraine. Congratulations for all you do. We know you're at home right now watching, so I hope you know that we are celebrating you. And then for some events, just want to announce that BAMFest is happening. Black Arts and Music Festival happens every year at Franklin Park. It's going to be, they have some great performers. That's this weekend at Franklin Park. Please support. July 4th is next week, next Thursday. So happy Independence Day to America as we continue in this project of democracy. And I know that there are some flag raisins coming up. Councilor Fernandez Anderson mentioned the Cape Verdean flag raising that will be happening next Friday. And now my colleagues, if they'd like to mention any announcements, they can do so at this moment. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
Hi, I think many of you might have seen the news that Squealing Pig burned down last night in Mission Hill. It was a real favorite of mine. Their curry was one of my favorite foods, and in Mission Hill, and they've been open for 26 years, and there is an active investigation of potential arson. I'm not sure exactly how that will turn out, but the, I just wanted to announce to our city council community that the family, Dermot O'Neil, they promised to create a place where people will gather again, and they were actually up to, they wanted to build a floor on top of. So they had real plans to build community space and build housing on top of. So I just feel horrible, and I know that it's been a really long meeting, but just wanted to let you all know, it's a great community spot, and hopefully we'll all be there again soon. But they, people have been great to them, but, but just flagging this for everyone, such a beloved place.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you. So on tomorrow, Thursday, the Civil Rights and Racial Equity and Immigrant Advancement Committee will be holding a hearing on Reparations Task Force, just reviewing its process thus far and how it's going. This was co-sponsored, actually, I think my co-sponsors are this time. But anyway, tomorrow here, 2:00 PM, Councilor Mejia, I know you're a co-sponsor, I'm sorry, 2:00 PM here in the chamber in person. I know we're going to catch up with our sleep, but it's super important that the community has support. I expect a whole lot of people to be here to testify and to participate. We have a great panel lined up, so please attend. Blue Hill Ave Transportation Action Plan, open house, super important, at the William Divine Golf Course tomorrow at Franklin Park at 6:00 PM. DSNI is 40th anniversary, it's going to be at the Shirley Yousas House from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Then on Saturday, the Third Annual Greater Reentry Summit at Roxbury Community College, starting at 9:00 AM. And then District 7 Quarterly Town Hall, it's going to be virtual. This is not the state of neighborhood where I, we only do each neighborhood. Again, it's virtual, so for at-large counselors and any state officials that are watching, please join us. Christmas Addicts Children's Center Community Festival, also happening from 12:00 to 3:00 PM at 105 Crawford Street, Dorchester. And then Voices of Liberation Fire Complaint Day at 484 Center Street. And then you have, sorry if I'm mispronouncing this, We Still Dance as New Pomo Komun. Sorry if I mispronounced that, but this is Danza Organica, Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Equity Inclusion Cabinet, Office of New Urban Mechanics, Urban College Design is hosting this at the Tower Auditorium, 621 Huntington Ave. This is all in my district, y'all, so. A lot happens in District 7 all at once, but hopefully you guys can make this sum. Then the, at, on the 30th, June 30th, Sunday, Boston Juneteenth Freedom Fest here in, at in City Hall. It's going to be super exciting. This is from 12:00 to 4:00, so please join. And then, of course, BAMFest, also in my district, which was mentioned. Somali Heritage Celebration will be from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, 89 Norfolk Street. Please join us in celebrating Somali heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
I'm back. It won't be that long, I swear. So I, I wanted to just, two things, and they're both about Annalise. You know, she's my one and only. So you know that she just started, this is the first job that she has, and I want to give a shout-out to all of the work that gets put into giving young people a job. She's been really super excited. She actually went through an interview process, and she was really thorough about her interview, and she actually negotiated which place that she wanted to be. So I just want to say shout-out to Annalise for landing her first job, and to all of the young people who are entering their, you know, careers. And so I just want to give a shout-out to all of the kids, including my own. I'm really excited because, you know, I'm a workaholic, and so I love the fact that my daughter's going to get to work. And then the other is that Annalise is a player for the base, and she was part of the Mayor's Cup. I don't know if you guys followed the softball situation, but that was a big deal this weekend. Even though she didn't win, the game, she played three games on Sunday and pitched all three games, okay? She pitched all three games. She pitched over 400 pitches. And out of those 400, she made 146 strikes. And I know it's late, I know we've been here for a long time, but I make many sacrifices, including sometimes my own daughter, and I just want her to know that I am so proud of her. She didn't have to go to summer school. She had a really rough year, and I am using my liberty to uplift my daughter because she usually takes the backseat to a lot of the stuff that happens because she knows there's a lot of work to do. So I love you, I am proud of you, and I'm going to be home soon.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia, and double congrats to your daughter. It was fun seeing her on FaceTime. The chair recognizes Council Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let everyone know that this Friday in Hyde Park from 1:00 to 4:00 is the, finally, the ribbon-cutting of the Pride, which is the first LGBTQ-plus-friendly senior housing in the entire country. Congresswoman Pressy is going to be there, I think one of the senators is going to be there. So to my at-large counselors, I invite you all to District 5. If any other district council wants to come, please come through. It'll be a beautiful event, celebrating a beautiful occasion.
Awesome. I'll be there. It's an exciting time. The chair recognizes Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Friday at 4:00, I believe the mayor's office is going to be honoring the English High Baseball Team at the English High Baseball Field, so I hope people can come out and support the team. I'd like to point out Voices of Liberation is Saturday evening, that is around the corner from my house in District 6, and hope to be there, you know, with Slim, who runs the place. It's an amazing organization. And lastly, you know, I, Council President Luizhen pointed out, I think it's tradition that we recognize our, when our chiefs leave us, so I just, I'm standing for my chief, Aaron Hamilton Grenham, who's been here the whole time today. He loves this stuff, and I'm going to miss him, and, because he's leaving, going to law school. So congratulations, Aaron.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any additional announcements? Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. If anyone would like to speak up on behalf of anyone who has passed, please turn your light on. I just want to say, it's been a really tough time for my family on my father's side. My father recently lost his aunt, my great aunt, Ines Luizhen, was a pillar for our family. So just hold her daughters, my aunts in prayer. It is a fourth loss on my father's side this year, having lost his brother, his niece, a cousin, and now his aunt. So it's been really pretty heavy in my family, so I just want to uplift Ines Luizhen and my entire family at this time. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to honor the memory of Reverend Daniel Mahoney, the Chief Chaplain of the Boston Fire Department, pastor emeritus of St. Francis de Sales Church in Charlestown. This, this man was a literal saint. Whenever there would be a fire, and there would be a firefighter who unfortunately lost his life, or any, any person who lost their lives in a fire, he would be the first ones to tell them and tell their families that they had tragically passed. And so he provided spiritual guidance for firefighters, anybody that's been through this terrible incident. And in addition to that, in Charlestown, he was a guiding light and a beacon, so I rise to honor his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta Zapata. Is anyone else looking to speak?